In a letter dated September 29th, 2021 to the Department of Justice, the National School Boards Association accused parents in the United States of domestic terrorism and hate crimes, which warranted the use of the Patriot Act as a tool to use against these parents. The response by the Department of Justice came in the form of an October 4th memorandum to create a task force that would investigate parents who protested at school board meetings. The National School Boards Association has since admitted that the language used in the original letter had no justification, but in this episode of The Rational Educator, we ask the question, who are these school boards anyway? Where did they come from? What is their purpose? And why do they wield such extraordinary power over our public school system? If you like what we're doing here at The Rational Educator, please take a moment to hit that like button. That's the best way to let YouTube know that they should be showing our videos to more people. And make sure you subscribe to this channel so you'll never miss an episode. Check out our website, rationaleducator.com, where we update the homepage with up to the minute news stories in the world of education. Sign up for our mailing list by going to rationaleducator.com and scrolling to the bottom where you'll find a sign up button. You can also find us on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Harler, and Rumble. Here's the episode. All right, Deanna, laid on us. Who are these school boards? Where did they come from?
Well, the school board itself is about 100 years old, maybe a little bit longer. But the idea of having a committee overseeing education dates back hundreds of years. I mean, it goes back to the 1640s with the Puritans that came to the New World in the Massachusetts Bay Colony. And they were very, very much interested in education and they really wanted to educate their children. And so what they did is that they appointed citizens to oversee establishing a system. And this was done in 1647. So the idea of having a citizenship committee overseeing education is uniquely American, but also goes back a long way. And then in 1721 in Boston, what we see is that there was the Selectmen, which was a committee of citizens. And they became a permanent citizens committee and part of what they were supposed to see and have sort of control of in Boston were the schools. And so that is in 1720, 1721.
And so the original idea for, for this is really having civilian oversight as oversight and as an advisory panel to, to make sure that the, the community's voice was heard.
Absolutely, and to ensure that there was education for children. You know, as far back as, you know, 1721, 1641, it wasn't normal, particularly in Europe where these settlers came from, to have schools, community schools. Now, a lot of the education was done by churches, it was done by different societies. But to have a community itself come together and not a particular, you know, part of that community, whether it's a church or a guild or something like that. This was revolutionary in terms of what's going on in America. In 1826, we go to Massachusetts again. And this is right around the time that we have, and we've talked about this before in an earlier podcast, about these educators going over and observing the Prussian system. This is a little earlier than when Horace Mann went. But in 1826, Massachusetts, they said that each town should have a separate committee. So a specific committee overseeing education, and it should be made up of the citizenry. So that was the first time that we see that each town is going to have a specific education committee where they're going to be over, you know, sort of overseeing. And this is really what a lot of people point to as the origins of the school board. And so we're talking almost 200 years that this has been part of the American system.
So we're really thinking about this as, as being citizen involvement and in an advisory position to, to oversee how schools are run rather than necessarily a professional class of politicians whose, whose sole job is to run the schools as professional experts would?
Absolutely, and you know, going back, you know, eight, by the time we get to the 1820s, we're past the revolution, we're past our constitution. And if you know anything about American history, you know that our founding fathers left education up to the states. It's a local thing, it's kind of covered in the 10th amendment that if it's not particularly in here, it's a state issue. And so what we see happening in Massachusetts, and we can really thank Horace Mann for this, that spreads throughout America. So the system that's established in Massachusetts, where we get the Prussian system of schools, where you have kids isolated by peer groups or age, and there's compulsory testing, you have teachers that are specially trained. All of these things come from Prussia. This school board becomes part of that. And that spreads, and that's just the accepted system in America for government or public schooling.
So that's where we first start to see this, this top down hierarchy in which the, the schools are much more organized from almost like a bureaucratic level. And, and this is where we start to see the beginnings of this professional class of education bureaucrat.
Absolutely, and, and that's a really good segue to what happens next. At the turn of the last century, so from the 19th into the 20th century, education was sort of this hot button issue again. And political corruption, favoritism, all of these things that we may think about today, those were happening at the turn of the last century as well. And so what happens is that these school reformers have this great idea that you're now, we, what we need is we have these school boards, but they're getting a little political, there's some, you know, cronyism, corruption going on. So now we are going to have a chief delegate. And the school board will delegate authority to one individual. And the sort of chief executive of the school can figure out who that is now, what we call that person?
What?
The superintendent.
Okay.
So this is where we get the superintendent of schools. And that person is given a lot of power, but also is the one that is ultimately held accountable for the overall performance of schools. And that was what was initially designed. And so this governance structure where you have a superintendent and a board established at the early 20th and late 19th, early 20th century, it's been that way since that time.
So at this point, the, the schools are becoming more centralized rather than less. So the, even though there was an, as you say, an initial backlash against the, what was appearing to be cronyism at the time, the method of combating cronyism was to install a, a powerful figure that would run everything as a philosopher king would?
Pretty much, yes, you could definitely say that. Now, this is still all done on the local level, within the community, within the townships, within the cities, you know. And the next thing to happen is that we're now going to get a state board of education. And that comes later. And by the 1940s, that's really, the state boards of education are getting more and more power. Now, it is still very local, the federal government doesn't really have much say at all in education. There's a few things, you know, you get the colleges that the government, the federal government is sponsoring. But really, education is left to the states and that remains pretty strongly. And then-
Even though there's more and more centralized control being introduced as these new governing bodies are given sanction by the state governments.
Absolutely, and so what happens in the 19, by the time it gets to the 40s and 50s, there's a lot of distrust, a lot of confidence that's been broken in the school boards. And so that's why you start getting more state, on a state level, more influence on that way. And then in 1965, you get this really strong pivotal moment. And you get the ESEA, which was passed by Johnson. And this is a federal policy that is geared towards particularly special education and ensuring that all students of all abilities are getting what they need. But what it does is that it kind of inserts the feds into the state-run education system. And from there-
That sounds like a great bait and switch, right? I mean, you know, you, you justify it by, by an altruistic premise that you're going to be serving those with special needs, those who need it the most. But what you're really doing is imposing even more centralized control.
Absolutely, and so politics really gets more and more embedded, particularly from the 1960s forward. If you know anything about educational policy and history, you get No Child Left Behind, you get Common Core. And so the feds are pushing more and more sort of control onto the states. And the way that they do this, and this is goes back to 65, is with money. If you do these things, we will give you money. And because states want money and education wants money, then that's really how all of these things sort of expand. But the school boards, interestingly enough, become this almost political springboard for people. And even though they're, they've always been nonpartisan, like when you elect a school board person, you're not electing Republican or Democrat or Libertarian or any other party. You, they are nonpartisan, so you're just selecting them on their merits without a party affiliation theoretically. So, but what happens over time is that this becomes more and more political and it becomes a stepping stone for people wanting to serve in political office. So if you get elected to the school board, then you can get elected to a higher level school board. Like maybe you start at a small town or rural school district, and then you go to a larger district. And then maybe you go to a community college district school board. And then you go into another office in the community and kind of building your way up to run in political office. You also, even though they're nonpartisan, the teachers' unions have been really, really prominent in backing people to run, throwing money their way, getting teachers, getting people to support particular people running for school boards. So it's a very political process and it is very much backed by the teachers' union. And having served in a teachers' union in my career as a professor, they are really, really morally corrupt organizations. And so that's who's backing the school boards and that's pretty much the history of how we are where we are today.
All right, let's bring Andy in on this now. There's a lot going on here, but we can see a, kind of a slow erosion of the education process from this very decentralized system to the slowly centralizing control higher and higher up the food chain from state governments to federal governments. This is something that we see mirrored in a lot of America over the course of the 19th and 20th century. What can you say about the phenomenon that's going on here?
Let me ask, Deanna, first of all, I assume that the superintendents of these local school boards generally go through teachers' colleges and have a, have a teaching degree? Is that right?
Sometimes they do, sometimes they're, the superintendents would typically be pulled from the education. They're definitely going to be backed by the unions and they definitely typically are educators, but not in every single circumstance. I don't, I mean, I don't know that for sure, but I would imagine there probably are some superintendents that may have been pulled in from business or law or something, but they would have had, they, in the modern day, they definitely, you know, if the teachers' unions are going to back superintendents of schools and they have a lot of power and they have a lot of money. And so they can help with name recognition. If you're voting for a superintendent and you don't know anything about education, anything, then you're probably just going to vote maybe name recognition. And so, but they, you know, the, the unions are very much embedded and in bed with who's going to be on that ballot for the superintendent.
Yeah, well, I can understand that. And, you know, regarding your question, Joel, we've certainly seen, we've seen this, this power centralized in the, in, in the hands of educational power brokers in the 20th century. Arthur Bestow wrote a really good book all the way back to the 1950s called The Educational Wastelands. And Bestow was a history professor, American history, I don't remember which university he taught at. But in his book on the, on the, on the public school system, on the educational wastelands, he labeled what, what he called the interlocking directorate as who, who controls education in this country. And those are the teachers' colleges or the schools of education, the federal and state departments of education. And then, Deanna, who you were talking about, local superintendents, you know, and principals and, you know, of the schools. He called that an interlocking directorate. And of course, they have, as he points out, Bestow points out, tremendous power over the, over the schools. And 40 years later, E.T. Hirsch, his book, you know, The Schools We Need and Why We Don't Have Them, he called it an impregnable fortress, which I think it is, because they, you know, it's, it's not subject to change. They, they, they don't raise criticisms of edu-, you know, like for instance, generally, you know, the, the main problem, I think, is the rejection of phonics for, for the whole word method. And so many kids struggling just to read, that's the single most important educational skill, right? Is, is, is to read. And, you know, the educational schools and the interlocking directorate generally often reject that. And, and, you know, the academic program has been severely, severely diluted. And notice, doesn't matter, I mean, parents will rail against the school system and, yes, with, with very little, very little change. And, you know, I always like to go back to 1983, Nation at Risk. You know, this was, that was a cabinet level committee that formulated that report about the American schools. I said something like, you know, if a foreign power had imposed this on us, we would have, this kind of educational performance, we would have considered it an act of war. With 1983, that's 38 years ago. The schools have gotten worse, not better. And so I think Hirsch is right. The, this interlocking directorate of power, which includes the, you know, the, the superintendents and principals at the community level, it is an impregnable fortress, as, as Hirsch said, I think it can be circumvented, but I don't think, I don't think it can, it can be changed. So I empathize with these parents, you know, as I said, go get them. If you, if you're going to keep your kids in the schools and not pull, and not pull them out and homeschool them, then do what you can. You know, we discussed this last week, do what you can to try and remediate the problem, you know, at, in the local level in, in your schools. But you, you need to beware what you're up against, because Professor Hirsch from University of Virginia is right. It is, it is an impregnable fortress. They may, they may do some cosmetic changes for a while to try and placate, placate the parents. But, you know, they're going to drift back, not drift back, they're going to head, you know, purposefully back to their anti-academic, you know, anti-phonics, pro-communist propaganda, it's not what it is, you know, their leftist, their leftist propaganda, that's, that's who they are. And I, you know, and, and now on top, on top of everything else, now, like you, you said in, you know, in the intro, now these parents who are standing up for their kids' education, now they have to deal with, with school board associations and the Department of Justice possibly, you know, you know, if you label somebody domestic terrorists, it's not that big a step from there to, to legal prosecution, you know, to bring charges against, against somebody. So the impregnable fortress is getting even more impregnable. So, you know, I'm with, I'm with these parents wholeheartedly. But I, I also would, like we said before, you might want to reconsider sending your kids to these schools.
Well, there is definitely, as you hinted at, a, an ideological component to, to this-
I didn't hit that, Joel, I called them communists.
Yes, you did. And we, we want to explore, yeah, we, we definitely want to explore that. But I, before we do, I want to bring up the thought that this, there is a negative feedback loop that this edifice, this monolith of the education system has. You know, as academic performance continues to decline, they have a demand for more money and more resources poured into the system, which happens to also insulate that from any change. You know, the more money they have, the less able they are to change. So can either of you comment on the introduction of vast sums of taxpayer-funded largess? And, and how that inhibits meaningful change within the education system?
I was just saying one thing, let me say one thing real quickly, Dr. D., and then you could take over. If the, if the schools are going to receive even, you know, schools fail and then the solution according to the federal government or whatever is to, is to put more money into those schools. So, so the more we fail, the more money we get. I don't, I don't think there's a real financial incentive there, you know, to, to excel.
No, it's a negative incentive.
Yeah, yes, yeah, it certainly, it certainly is, I was being ironic. So, yeah, that's, that's one of the major problems with the public schools. It's done by coercion, they get students based on compulsory attendance. So they get students, you know, victims by force, and they get money by taxation, by force. And the more poorly they do, the more, the more we, the more we force the taxpayers to put in more money. So, yeah, it's a terrible, it's a terrible system. Obviously, there's no, there's no incentive then to achieve academic excellence.
Well, one thing that they do with all the extra money they get, and this, you can start looking at 1979, when education went from, went into a cabinet level department and that was really backed by the National Education Association, the largest teachers' union. And so what happens is that you have these educators lobbying in Washington and lobbying on the state level, saying, we need more money, we need more money, kids, look at the test scores, they're falling behind, they're falling behind. But as Dr. Andy has mentioned so many times, which cannot be mentioned enough in my opinion, is that the, you know, removal of phonics from education and the pedagogical methods that are being sort of introduced now in teaching kids and the way that they're teaching kids is, that's the reason why they're leaving people, you know, kids are being left behind. But by pouring more money into the system, what they're doing is they're hiring administrators, they're hiring specialists, they're hiring all these extra people. It's not necessarily going into the classroom and to examine the problem or to say, okay, we're going to hire a diversity, equity, inclusion officer and they're going to look at all the people of color and decide why their test scores are so low. Well, we have to help them up. And, you know, it's really shocking to me to see what they're doing. And now they're saying, and this is across the board and you see it in colleges, and what happens in colleges typically trickles down. And sometimes what happens in K through 12 trickles up into colleges. But colleges are no longer requiring an admissions exam because exams are racist. So think about it, you're going to hire all of these administrators, you're going to look at test scores and then you're just going to come out and say, you know what, we're not going to do testing anymore because it's racist. Because giving tests, students of color particularly underperform, and so now we know that tests are racist. And so what do you do if there's, you know, this problem of test scores? Well, just get rid of the tests and we'll try, you know, and then we won't have to look at test scores anymore. And this is sort of, and so, but we need more money to do this, we need more money pumped into the system. Now, when I was teaching at the community college level, I was on a lot of committees, I was an academic senator, I was a state level senator, district level senator, and there was always this request for money. And when the school or the district or the state got money, they would say, okay, now we need to spend the money on a small percentage of population of these particular people that check the boxes on this particular race that are underperforming, when a horrific percentage, I think it was in the 70, 70% of incoming freshmen at the college level were below, like senior level math. 46% were below a college level reading level. But they want to do these boutique programs to make, I don't know, make, maybe make themselves feel better. So we need more money so we can put all of this money towards 3% of the population because they're underperforming. But there, there's never, they don't address with all of this money why they're underperforming. It's like putting a Band-Aid on a broken leg and expecting it to be okay and you can just walk off and it doesn't work. And so pumping more money into a system that has so much money that is being misused is ridiculous. But the unions, the school boards, like this whole system is so corrupt that they just want more money, more money, more money in order to fix problems.
Yeah, we, we know that it's, at this point, it's not just corruption, you know, if it were just corruption. And, you know, we would still see failing academic performance and a slow degradation into, in, into just inefficient processes and whatnot. If it was just about cronyism and corruption. But there's also an ideological component to this as well. And that's really the title of this episode is the, the ideological war that the school boards are waging against families and parents. So what is this ideological war? Why is it that the, the school boards, supported by, you know, the existing powers, the unions and school administrators, why are they all uniformly Marxist? Where, where does that come from?
Teachers' colleges, they're all educated and they're educated by teachers from teachers' colleges. They're all Marxist and it's the indoctrination, I went through it. And everything is critical race or critical theory or everyone is a victim and everyone is an oppressor. And that is rampant in education. You cannot get away from it, no matter what level you're on. Even in, you know, there are some, you would think really good schools, Montessori programs, there's still this bent that trickles through and you really, parents have to do their due diligence in understanding how bad and how deep this corruption goes.
But, so we, we know though that, you know, school board membership does not require a degree from a teacher's college. You know, they, obviously there, as we said, their original intent was to be a citizen advisory board that would oversee, you know, or act as an oversight committee over the running of the schools. So how do these Marxists get there?
They're backed by the teachers' unions and they're the ones getting elected.
Marxism is a philosophy, so let me, you know, as the resident philosopher, let me, let me make, let me make a few, few points. Marxism is a horrendous philosophy, first of all. I, I mean, you know, Marx was a philosophic materialist, as everything's matter and there's nothing but matter, which means you and I are just bodies, which then the, the human mind is just neurons, you know, there's just neurons firing in the brain, electrical discharges up and down the nervous system. So Marxism is a materialist philosophy, it's false, as can be. It, it, its social philosophy is essentialized around the principle of inherent class struggle, class warfare. You know, rich versus, the only class versus the, the, the working class, which is obviously false. I mean, how many, how many people have risen out of poverty or out of, out of a work class up into middle class comfort under the capitalist system? You know, in, in Western Europe, North America, the Asian tigers, by this time, hundreds of millions, probably billions. So, I mean, the philosophy is clearly false. In, it leads to a brutal totalitarian state everywhere it's implemented. They're the, they're the most egregious mass burgers of history, Southern Union, China, Cambodia. So, you know, your question, Joel, it's like, you know, I think, how did the, these sick people? They, they, Dr. D. is absolutely right, they controlled the teachers' colleges for a century now, and even more. They controlled humanities divisions of our universities in philosophy and history and literature, all the man-centered disciplines. This, this Marxist ideology is prevalent, you know, you'll find a few who are so, sociology, you might find one or two sociologists in the country who are, who are, well, yeah, Irving Lewis Horowitz passed away unfortunately. He might have been the only, you know, the guy at Rutgers who founded Transaction Books. He might have been the only, you know, pro-capitalist sociologist in the country. But, you know, but it's, no, I don't know the answer to your question, I wish I did. How did the sickest people gain control of humanities divisions in our universities and of the, of, of the school system? They do. I don't know, you know, I, I don't know how that happened, you know, how the more rational people, you know, they, they talk about the brain drain, you've heard, we've, we've heard of that, the brain drain out of the humanities and into the hard, into the hard sciences, which I think- out of the humanities and into the hard into the hard sciences, which I think, uh, play plays a role here.
And because there is a mistaken notion that you can escape from Marxism by going to the hard sciences now. You know, it it that may have been the case in the past because the belief is that, uh, you know, the the sciences are the scientists, gravity is always gravity, physics will always be right or wrong.
Let me, let me jump back here, gravity is always gravity and Marxists are always Marxists. They're leading, they want a communist state, they want political power, they want total political power. And man, we are seeing it now, and it's just, and it accelerated in the last, I don't know, five years maybe. Uh, it accelerated dramatically and terrifying. Now, parents speaking up on behalf of their children's education is going to be labeled domestic terrorists, bad enough by the school board associations, but by the Department of Justice? I mean, this is, this is terrifying. I mean, this is, this is dictatorship is is what is we're getting increasingly closer, you know, closer to it. And it's very predictable, this is what what Marxists wants, what they do, and they completely control the culture now.
They they do seem to have this preternatural ability to find the soft spots in organizations and to install themselves as influencers and in leadership positions, um, you know, like they're, uh, that's their prey. You know, they're wild animals and this is, they they find that this is where they go to eat. They just seem to to go there. And and what's remarkable about their organization is that it seems if you were in, I don't blame people for feeling that there are conspiracy theories running afoot because it seems that way. But, um, but it, they don't actually have to be coordinated on a on a physical level. They just have to be coordinated on an ideological level.
We have something much deeper at work here than a conspiracy, it's a philosophy. It's a philosophy shared by millions. And there may be little mini conspiracies, you know, CNN may get together, you know, the the suits that run CNN may get together with the guys who run CBS News. And yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna tell this story about Hunter Biden's laptop. There may be little mini conspiracies like that. Maybe, maybe not, I don't know, doesn't matter because it's all driven by a shared philosophy. And it's the philosophy that's at work.
And it makes the conspiracies easier to, uh, you know, to pull off. I mean, if there are any, because they have, um, they have the same shared worldview. And on that note, Deanna, you have a couple of news stories about real collusion that was uncovered, um, very recently between the Department of Justice and and the school boards.
Hey, big boss man, before Dr. D, can I just say something, go back to your previous question? Because I was just thinking, you know, as, that's a lot, right? Thinking's a lot.
Encouraged.
Well, so far, anyway, I mean, it's it's early yet.
I was gonna say, in the schools, it should be encouraged. But I do think, you know, how did the Marxists get so much power? I do think there's some default here on the part of of the better, of the better people, the better intellectuals. And Ayn Rand brilliantly points out, you know, I think that the altruist ethics, you know, is is dominant, that, you know, that we should sacrifice for others is, uh, you know, is a moral, you know, is a moral principle. And I think it disarmed intellectually, disarmed morally, disarmed a lot of the conservatives. Because, you know, that's what the communists claim to be all, we care about the little guy, we care about the workers. We don't, we're not, we're not, we're going to prevent the rich from oppressing the poor. And I think, uh, you know, a lot of the conservatives who are better politically, who supported capitalism, I think they're morally disarmed and, um, they just kind of seated the these kind of, these kind, they couldn't fight. They they couldn't fight against against the Marxists. And so I think they, uh, they lost the battle or they or they gave up. And now there is no battle.
Well, they they do have, um, the advantage of having thought through a lot of these battles. Uh, whereas the, um, uh, conservatives conservatives in particular seem to always be taken by surprise. They don't have legitimate answers for the questions that are raised of them. But Deanna, you you had some news stories about some of the collusion that took place between these entities.
Yeah, so what you were talking about in the intro with, um, the the school boards and the Department of Justice, and it's the National Association of School Boards. They, it's come out actually Saturday, um, of this week that we're doing the podcast in November, that they had interactions and there have been emails that have been released that have, you know, shown that they consulted with the White House before this letter to the DOJ or, you know, was ever sent from the National School Board Association. So this shows that they were talking with the White House, talking about, now we have parents that are really, you know, pushing back against critical race theory, against what's going on, what's being taught in schools. And, um, they were trying to figure out how to disarm these parents. And it's really interesting because you have school boards that have come out and, you know, school board members that have come out and said, and you've had legislators come out and say, um, Governor of Michigan, that, you know, who just vetoed two bills that the populist really wanted on school choice, she vetoed those. And so
Whitmer, Whitmer, you mean, right?
Whitmer, yes.
We should, we should name, we should name her, you know, so she gets the appropriate she deserves.
Exactly. Um, and so, you know, there the school boards are saying, how do we, um, make sure that that we, the parents know we have more control over their children than they do? Parents shouldn't be talking, you know, raising these concerns, we know what's best for your children. And so it's kind of like for sixteen hours a day, I'm going to, you know, make sure that my kid has everything they need. But for eight hours a day, I'm gonna just make, you know, I don't care anymore. They're, they know better. And I'm like, there's no way that anybody knows better than a parent about their children. Now, you do have bad parents, you have bad anybody. But in general, uh, maybe I'm a little too Pollyanna, it's normal for me. But parents have the well being, have the best interest of their children in mind, and they shouldn't be shut down about what they're concerned. And, you know, there's been such a shift of education in the twentieth century and particularly in the last forty years of, you know, just being really focused on learning the three Rs, reading, writing, arithmetic. And now it's about creating these tiny little activists and making every little kid, teenager, middle schooler, this sort of armed activist to pump through this policy, you know, these policies that are, this basically, it's just Marxist paradigm. And parents are like, no, you're not going to do that to my kid, that is wrong. You have, I just watched this great video of this African American mother, I think she was in Minnesota, going to the school board and telling them, demanding that they stop teaching her son that he is a victim and that, you know, all people, all white people are racist, you know. And she's a lawyer, she's very well spoken, and she articulated her point so well. I wish I could be that well spoken when I'm trying to make an argument. Um, but that, you know, she's very good at that, obviously, she's a lawyer. But it was just really empowering to see her hold the school board accountable. Like, you do not do this to my child. And parents are coming up, they're not threatening violence, they're not doing anything of the sort, like this DOJ letter is saying. But they are demanding accountability and they are demanding that the school boards stop indoctrinating their children and go back to doing what schools should do. And that's to teach phonics, to teach reading, teach math. And one plus one equals two is not racist, but they are saying that that is racist math.
That that ship sailed decades ago, no? I mean,
It did, and I mean, that's why I'm a homeschool advocate, because I don't see it changing. I see that, um, it is, the system is so morally bankrupt.
Yeah, you you're right, the the fortress is impregnable. I mean, I think E. D. Hirsch is right, I don't think, I don't think it can be, it can be changed, it has to be circumvented. And, you know, and what are your points, yeah, there there are bad parents, but I was gonna say, there are many more bad bureaucrats, especially when they're driven by Marxist ideology. So overwhelmingly, parents know know best. So I think, I do think, you know, we've discussed this before, I'm sure we'll discuss it again. Homeschooling is a huge, uh, uh, opportunity here. This is, this is the way, I think, a big part of the way of the future. If there's going to be an educational future in this country, I think homeschooling, homeschool co-ops, you know, small community schools, teachers and parents opting out of the system, getting together, you know, four or five kids taught by one of the, you know, former teachers. I think this is tutors, as we discussed on one episode, I I I do think the the system can't be changed. But I know, so you wanted to focus on the ideology involved here was for this episode, was that right?
Well, it is, it is an ideological war, um, so that they they do have a, um, a moral foundation, even though it's a bankrupt moral foundation, but they do have, uh, the belief that they are
It's a venomous
Yes. And but they do have the belief that they are on the moral high ground, which gives them, uh, a a stamina, um, to to do all kinds of heinous things. You know, they they, if they believe that they're on the moral high ground, then anyone who opposes their policies is the devil. So what can a parent do to combat that?
One thing that I see, and, um, there's actually a legal case going up in Rochester, Minnesota. Parents have gotten together, a group of parents are getting together and they hired a lawyer. And on, um, there's an act in Minnesota where they can, uh, request documentation. And going back two years, they have a whole list of documents that they are requesting from the Rochester Superintendent of Schools about what, you know, critical race theory, if anything is talking about social justice, equity, anything in the curriculum within this district, they were, they've requested. And they will take legal recourse if that request is not honored because it's in their right of the law. So what I would say to parents is to find other parents. There is, um, not only, you know, sort of more ammunition in numbers, there's safety in numbers, right? Um, and so find other parents, start these collaborations. Now, the danger in that, and going back to what you'd said in the intro with the Scottsdale School District, which is just an interesting little tidbit, I graduated from that school district, I graduated high school from that school district. So it's a little close to home to see what's going on out there. But there's this dossier with all this parent information, photos of their children. And if any, it's any parent opposed anything doing with the COVID mandates or mask mandates or critical race theory, they were put on there. Um, the person who had done the dossier, whether it's the father, the superintendent, or I'm sorry, the, um, Chair of the Board, the
Yeah, let's be, let's be really clear about what this, uh, this particular case involves. There was a a president of the school board for this particular district uh, who was found to have, first of all, bragged about using a private detective to find information, very private information about the parents who were opposing their imposition of critical race theory, uh, practices and mask mandates.
So this was in Arizona.
Yeah, that's the the district that, uh, that Deanna attended. Um, and
I'm glad you had such a good influence there, Dr. D.
Yeah. But, uh, but this particular person was found to have collected, uh, social security numbers, financial information that he kept on a public Google Drive that wasn't discovered until a screenshot of this drive was circulated. And one of the concerned parents, uh, typed in the address that was in the screenshot and was able to access this public drive. So, uh, it's what's really, apart from the fact that we frequently find in these kinds of ideological mobs, that they are in such an ideological bubble that they feel that they're protected and insulated from from the outside world. And they end up being really stupid about things like this. But apart from that, he's, th- this particular person didn't seem to feel any compunction against, uh, collecting private information from opposition parents. So, and that's what I mean when I say that this, they believe that they're, that they have the moral high ground. Because when you believe that you are a crusader fighting for a higher good, lesser moralities don't have any merit to you and because you hold a higher moral purpose. And that's why I say that this is an ideological war, since we have a moral philosopher here today. Uh, Andy, what gives these people such a belief that they hold the highest moral purpose?
Right, that's a good question, Joel, and we discussed this in part in in earlier podcasts. You know, like we said, they're essentially Marxists, uh, the postmodernist mentality evolved out of Marxism and is very dominant today in in the intellectual culture. And it's the idea that society is divided into the oppressor and the oppressed classes. And so the the moral fervor has got to be, you know, from this mentality, we have to side with the oppressed. We have to do everything we possibly can to overthrow, you know, the, uh, the the oppressed, the oppressor classes. This, this is the, this is the moral imperative of our day.
By whatever means necessary.
Yeah, right, this is Marxist. And so, yeah, any lies, I mean, class warfare and revolution, you know, are morally sanctioned. Certainly any lies will will be. And we we need to understand from this, from this mentality, white people oppress non whites. Males oppress females, straights oppress gays, and, you know, and then, and, uh, uh, this is just hardwired into the fabric of American society. It's a racist, oppressive society. And the minorities and the the victimized classes have no chance on their own. This is what, this is what that lawyer mother was objecting to, as Deanna put it. Like, oh, you tell my son, he's, he's, he's a victim and he can't rise by means of his own merit? You know, that's a horrible lie to to indoctrinate a kid with. But but anyway, from the from the Marxist standpoint, we have to do everything we possibly can to to overthrow the oppressors. Um, you know, and to bring about some kind of social justice, some kind of equality. And so we need to teach, it's a moral imperative, it's like it comes from Mount Sinai. We have to be able to teach the little kids that white people are racist and America is systemically racist. We have to, otherwise we're not doing our moral obligation to, you know, protect the oppressed, victimized, you know, helpless underclass from these overbearing white male bully. And bullies don't even work, you know, there's this victimizes oppressors. So, yeah, there's a moral fervor, anything that, anything, anything it takes. Lie, you'll lie about what critical race theory is, you you know. Parents, parents speak out against it, that what we will will publicly state, they have no right. They, parents shouldn't be telling, you know, the schools what's what they should teach. We'll label them domestic terrorists, the next step, of course, would be to bring legal action against them. Maybe lock them away for months on end without bringing them to trial, like, you know, the January sixth rioters, some of them have rotted in prison now for a long time with, uh, without without being charged or, you know, brought, brought to trial, you know, whatever it takes.
And they'll do this while at the same time claiming that critical race theory doesn't exist. So and and that's, it's just another lie, it's whatever.
It's just another lie, it's just another lie. Well, we're not teaching, you know, it's whatever it takes, but we have the little kids, you see. We have the five and six year olds and the seven year olds, and we can teach them this. We just have to shut the parents up with any lie it takes. Because once we have the little kids indoctrinated, you know, they, those little kids grow up to be adults and X number of years down the road, they will be, you know, they will be warriors for social justice. They will stand
We're already, yeah, we're already seeing that. I mean, there are reports out now that, um, kids, what, I think it was sixteen to twenty-two or around that age group, I may get that, um, ages, specific ages wrong. But over fifty percent of them, and I think it was close to seventy percent, they think that socialism is a great way of living in society, they want a socialist society. And the problem is, is that coming out of the schools and education, and it's like, what is being taught? They're not being taught what Marx did. They are not being taught what socialism actually is. They're like, oh, well, you'll just get free stuff and you, you know, the government will take care of you and you won't have to worry, and it's just kind of sugar coated, um, lie, it's really what it is.
You're right, Dr. D, and these kids support Bernie Sanders, who is the worst politician in in this country in my lifetime. And maybe, maybe go And maybe, maybe going back before, he's the most dishonest and he's the most evil, he's the most dangerous. I, I, I mean, this guy, didn't he honeymoon in the Soviet Union? As I, you know, as I, as I recall, and, you know, he, he seems to admire Venezuela and Cuba. He won't condemn, you know, freedom fighters in Cuba or, or, I mean, he won't support freedom fighters in Cuba or Hong Kong. He's the worst. He's virulently anti-capitalist, he's not like pro-socialist. He's as close to being a communist as any serious politician has been. And, and, and like you said, the college kids, some large segment, maybe, maybe not a majority, but some large minority of support Bernie Sanders.
I think also that it's, it's where we are right now is that, you know, we find a lot of people, as we said earlier, unable to, to answer if the method by which the, the Marxists controlling education is to accomplish their, their goals by any means necessary, then most decent people don't have a way to counter it effectively if they accept the same moral premise. And so the, the only way for, for decent people to be able to engage in that world is to reclaim the moral high ground. Because otherwise, they're just going to be steamrolled. The good news is that, even though this may be a small kernel of good news, is that there does appear to be some pushback against the actions taken by the National Association of School Boards.
There are, there are 26 states that have come out and said, we do not support this letter. We are trying to distance ourselves on this one topic. And 11 states, this is November 14th when we're recording this. There are 11 states that have left the National School Board Association, which is good. Because the more you go back to decentralization, the more it goes back into the local community, which is more that the parents have more autonomy over what's being done, what the community has, what's being done. And that was really the initial intent. What's happened in the last 150 years was not the initial intent for schooling in America. Whether you're looking at the Puritans, 1826 Massachusetts, what the founding fathers said. They wanted to be very local community. And, you know, from particularly the 1960s forward, the, there's been so much more policy. And it's been driven through giving money. And so, you know, education needs money to thrive. States need money, you know, state education, superintendents and boards, they need money so they can give to the schools. So it's a money game, it's a money power grab. And so if these, these actions that are happening now start to break up some of the centralization, I think that's a win. And I'm very happy.
So, yeah, that's, that's an important point, is that the, the corruption in the system is greatly driven by money as well as ideology. But the, the money is the, 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 the blood that makes it, you know, run. But, you know, we know that, and we've said before on these episodes, that taking your child out of the system starves the system because the funding mechanism is based on headcount. Now, we've said that as a possible hope for the future, that it may starve the system. But as we know, a wounded animal can be the most dangerous. And if homeschooling becomes that much of a financial threat to the existence of the public school systems, the funding mechanism may change. And furthermore, homeschoolers may be seen as an existential and societal threat and potentially a new point of attack for.
They will be labeled domestic terrorists and they will come under severe attack, even more so than they have now or, or in the past. And so we need to be prepared for that. You know, we.
The first cheer is, is do it now before it's, it's, it'll never be too late. You know, as long as you have dedicated parents. But as long as you can do it out in the open, do it as, as quickly as you can so that you can continue to do it out in the open.
Right. Because it will, there will be a big push to, to make it illegal if, if that many kids are taken out of the system. You know, as we advocate, that means kids, yeah, it'll be, it'll be a big push to, to declare it illegal.
There will be, there's also been a big push even in the last year and a half, when parents started taking their kids out, when schools were locked down and they didn't want their kids just to be on Zoom all day. There is a big push to sort of do some creative financing on how schools are getting paid and instead of doing by every student. So there will be a lot of new policies and sort of scrambling on the legislative side of how to deal with these issues. And property taxes across this, all of the states is the main funding mechanism for schools. And so, you know, you can, you'll still be paying property taxes. That money is still, you know, dog-eared for schools. Maybe they'll raise your property taxes as a punishment if more people homeschool. There's a lot of ways that they can start hurting people in this. But like I said earlier, I think there is power in numbers. And for parents to start making these coalitions and these groups and fighting back, I think that's important because ultimately the politicians need votes theoretically. And so if you get a big enough contingent of parents in an area, the politicians will not want to go against them. I mean, we have already seen some of this in, like in Virginia, the latest election for governor. And so I think that parents do have more power, but they're gonna have those, that power in numbers against the school boards, you know, like this group in Minnesota and Rochester, Minnesota, going and legal, going through the legal channels in order to find out exactly all the curriculum that's being taught. That's this Marxist ideology, gathering all that data. And then they have something that they can use and then fight. And it's this organization that I think parents are really need to start doing. And we need to see more of that across the nation.
And, and just to wrap this up, to add to the, the organizational functions, to, to add to the, to the growing numbers of parents who are organizing, also arm yourself, not just with, with law and, and the examples that you cite. Also arm yourself with ideology. Take that moral high ground back because they have it now. Your, your enemy has the moral high ground, so take it back from them. Make sure that you, first of all, know deep down and can back it up with arguments that, that you have sovereignty in the affairs of your family. And that's the, the starting point. Andy, is there anything you want to add to that?
I, you're, you're, you're absolutely right. The left is at war with America. And, I mean, they hate the country. They hate individualism, they hate individual rights, they hate capitalism, they want to impose communism. And I think, again, Ayn Rand gave us a brilliant answer in these extraordinary novels that, that are, that are great reads. I'd recommend them to everybody, especially the parents who are fighting for the, you know, the, the rights, their rights and the rights of their children, you know, in the, in, in the school system. But yet to stand up morally to recognize communism's evil. Doesn't matter what they say about wanting to help the little guy or whatever, that's a smokescreen. What they want is total power, life and death power. They murder millions of people. Freedom, individual rights and freedom is morally superior. America is vastly superior morally to any, any socialist or communist country. And even, even without reading out the show, I think parents can, can understand that and stand up for individual rights and capitalism against the Marxist premises and arguments of, you know, of, of the leftists. And do it, having, having taken back the moral high ground, knowing that they are morally right and the leftists are morally wrong. Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's a key to victory.
Well, once again, great way to end the show. Thank you to our panel, Doctors Hakenin and Bernstein.
Thank you, Joel.
Can I just end with a great quote from Mark Twain?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the great American author, Mark Twain, has this quote in his work. And it says, "In the first place, God made idiots. This was for practice. Then he made school boards." So I just wanted to share that with you. Before we left today, I thought it was quite appropriate for our topic.
Mark Twain, American humorist and prophet.
Yes, and that's from Following the Equator, the journey around the world, if you want to notice.
That is very funny, Dr. D, and thank you very much to end that on a good laugh.
Don't forget to check out our website, rationaleducator.com. Follow us on Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, Parler and Rumble. Thanks for watching this episode of the Rational Educator Podcast. We'll see you next time.